All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Ryndette Planning Board for Monday, June... We have all sorts of form, some of us haven't remembered that we have enough to constitute the board, so I'll open it up at this time. We have posted meeting agenda. I don't know if this time will be changes to that, so the agenda will be... So the agenda will stand as posted. Have you all received Jim's meeting notes? Any comments or questions?
I will accept them.
Thank you. I have a motion. I have seconds all over. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries. You've received the draft made 15 minutes ago. Does anyone have any corrections, additions?
No.
Here, Lynn, I'll let you kind of motion towards...
Second one.
Thank you, second please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, extension, motion carries. Now I'll take a couple of minutes as I... But I believe you, I hope you all received my repeat signal or circulation of the HAPAC memo that we received a couple of months ago. Now I want to take a few minutes and get some comments from you that we're in a position to respond to. I'm waiting to go all the way from very specific comments to very general comments or requests for a meeting or anything that you feel would be appropriate. So I would open it up for discussion.
Okay, I'd just like to open by saying that a reading of 125.62.1 would do a great deal to clear up a lot of the concerns that are listed in the ZARON memo because there is a number of responsibilities that are part of the conception of HAPAC in terms of educating the public, creation of maps, identifying historic resources. All of that would be very useful, and I think it would go a long way toward addressing the deficiencies that are in the ZARON memo.
Okay, anything else, Craig?
I have a lot. Maybe if I were to go point by point, I think we've been here for a very long time, but I can go through each of the individual items and make notes and circulate them to the other members of the board. I don't want to hog everyone's time.
Shall anybody else go first?
Yeah.
I'd rather remember to the planning board who are looking at this folder have some comments that they'd like to add to the record of the response from us.
I prepared some notes that I could circulate, but I want to do it a few... Did we get a copy of the ZARON memo that went to... The... When did we think? Oh, no, I missed that.
This is what came back from ZARON after a meeting, at their meeting with HAPAC.
Oh.
And this was circulated...
I sent it, I missed it some.
Was it back in March?
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, I'm just going to send this around and I could summarize.
That would be lovely. As I'm carrying this over a bit back, it would seem to me that after a brief conversation tonight, you might want to circulate the comments of others. Obviously Craig has put some time into it, Edna, and maybe we circulate all that when Craig and I could draft a response to share with the other members of the planning board if that will work for the rest of you. Is that something you'd be willing to work on when you have time?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
And I think that we would be able to present over as well.
Yes, yes, yes. What I would hope we could do is promise you that in good faith, that Craig and I could have a draft ready before the next meeting in two weeks. If we can accomplish that.
Yeah.
And we will then be able to take action as a board to authorize me to forward it on. Does that procedure seem reasonable?
Yes. Yeah, and I just, I think there's a real opportunity to help redirect the efforts of HAPAC and help them to focus on the duties and responsibilities that are outlined for them in the enabling legislation. So I think by working with you, we can really come to a good resolution that we can share with the rest of the board.
Okay. Edna, would you like to summarize?
Yeah, I'll summarize this. My thoughts were kind of specific. I thought that if HAPAC or a member were to be here and present their recommendation with rationale, that that would go a long way toward helping the planning board get up to speed on historic preservation, and it would also educate the public. So I think that would be terrific. I think that one way it could work is whenever historic properties are on our agenda, then there could be on the agenda a six o'clock or so meeting with HAPAC at which they would present their recommendation to the planning board for whatever historic property is going to be discussed. So they would always know when to come, they wouldn't have to sit around and wait, you know, for a public hearing. And what would happen during that is their presentation and questions and comments from the planning board so that we could understand precisely what they're recommending. There wouldn't be discussion among the planning board about whether to accept or not, that would wait for the public hearing. And then I thought, you know, if nobody is available to do that, maybe on occasion they could just say they could come in by Zoom. Somebody could come in by Zoom, get projected, you know, on the screen, and we could work that way. And I do think that we should respond to the recommendations in writing, just as we do with referrals from the CBA. And we should list what actions we took regarding the recommendation and then provide a rationale if we don't accept all of the recommendations. On the handbook, I think it's important to agree on what the purpose is. My thought is that it would, the reason for it would be to provide guidelines for applicants who want to make changes to historic properties. I would think it would be digital. I would think it would be on the HAPAC portion of the town website. I agree with HAPAC, their website link should be very visible, and obviously when you get to HAPAC, it should explain, you know, the whole issue of historic preservation and why it's important and what their role is, you know, and then the handbook would be there. And regarding training, there's stuff available on the state website, which is, you know, at least a start in training. And they might be a resource for, you know, where to get more materials, more good material. And then I think once we have all of this together and there is a return memo that goes to HAPAC, we ought to all just get together and have a coffee, you know, and maybe with like moderator and you could bat around some ideas and, you know, come up with some solutions.
Are there some things you want to add to this one?
I think I was really well responding to this right there, nothing else to add.
Okay, so then the plan we outlined is we will circulate various comments or we will circulate NS comments?
I do have one question, I'm sorry. There's questions around budget for certain things, and that's outside of our jurisdiction, like that shouldn't even be coming to us. Is that correct? Or we could advocate for them to essentially?
I think that they're asking us to exactly that, say that we feel it's important that there be a budget sufficient to support their website or to support any consultant staff that they might need from time to time. I think they're just looking for a reaffirmation from us of, I mean, if we would take the opposite, if we were to go in and say, "Nah, no need," that might allow the town board to say, "Planning board says no need," and I don't think that's the way we would want to approach it.
Right, so again, just commenting about really improving...
We have no authority in regards to the monies allocated for that amendment or the appointment of consultants or anything official. It would be simply like a referral, which I think was the way that was used.
So even though I had no comment, the only comment I could make, we're all doing this as volunteers, and none of us are paid, right? We were doing this for what we feel is good, for whatever other reasons. I think maybe it'd be nicer than generally minded of that they're doing that for the right reasons also, and, you know, same as us.
The only comment I would make is we have this city at the table with us, and I think one of the points they're making is that they don't feel they have adequate support to do the work and that... I'm paraphrasing, but I think it's inherent in the document that they feel that they could do a better job if they had some sort of support in place for them. And I think that's a reasonable comment. So we will circulate, Craig and I will encourage you to get any comments back to us. If you want a response from us in two weeks, I would like to see a response from you within a week or so.
Yeah.
By the end of the week would be great, then we could, well, next week to get at it, and then we'll come back to you. Okay? All right, thanks, everyone. We're a little behind, we'll try and get through the new applications so we can go into public hearing, but I thank you for your patience for this. New applications, T-Corps LLC 195, near the road. This is a site plan amendment for a miniature train. Mark, you're making a very efficient presentation.
Understood.
Okay.
Excuse me, good evening. Mark Kaminsky, I'm here representing T-Corps LLC, and so the purpose of this application is to, excuse me, request an amended site plan approval of the miniature train project located on the T-Corps property. This plan that Jim has brought up is a, is a site plan that shows multiple things. It shows the alignment of the proposed miniature train along here. It shows location of the structures associated with the project. This is the train house, this is the car barn, this is the ground house. Also shows certain improvements, regrading as required in order to construct the train. Certain sections like this are actual trestle sections through here, and then a darker section through here, these are actually bridges, and then this section went through here to the tunnel. And so I prepared as part of this edition, I just outlined for this board what the proposed modifications or amendments to the cycling that they're requesting. And so if you recall, there were two phases to this approval process for T-Corps. Phase 2B was, you know, part of the original master plan, and it was to handle the actual construction of the rail section of the train. And then phase three actually dealt with the structures that were located on the train property, and also it was not only the train property, it was also T-Corps LLC, other things. So we had to actually make application to this board and not application to the zoning board appeals. And so this specific amendment that we're requesting is now, it's actually, this section through here is, was previously a section of on-bray track along with a small section of trestle, and then, and then this was actually on-bray track also, but quite a bit of filling was required, so retaining structures were being proposed. It's, what's now being proposed in this section is to be replaced with a bridge, it's actually a Roman arch bridge, which is this right here. The total span of that bridge is about 170 feet, and then you can see that there's arch sections along, I'm sorry, it's 185, the arch section along through here, and then, Jim, if you could just hop back to the site plan, please. You can see there's some drainage sections through here, right, so runoff goes through here, so there's a section of the culverts and then also through here, look at these contours, both of them drain towards this stream that goes through here. So that's one proposed amendment, still within the, you know, the location of the original approved alignment. And I'll just also note that this dash section through here, just to refresh for the planning board, this is actually off the property of T-Corps LLC, the property boundary is right here, and then this property is owned by Annie Leibowitz, and so there's, with this document and the previous document, there's an easement agreement between T-Corps LLC and Leibowitz in order to allow the construction and operation and maintenance of this train, and that's included, included the power of that in this amended application. And then secondly, so there's essentially three items that we're requesting as part of the site plan, actually four items for the site plan amendment. The second section is right through here, and so this is now being proposed as a tunnel. So previous rating went through here and it had cuts, there's a hill right here, you can see this hill, and so it had retaining structures along here, both sides, and the train, the train track onto there. Jim, if you could just hop to the tunnel sections of this, now will be a tunnel, constructed steel, the earth will be over it and will be above walls on each end of, each end of that tunnel. Also, Jim, if you could just go back to the site plan, please. I'll just go back to the buildings here, and so there were just a slight modification to the actual location of the buildings, just track alignment dictated these building locations. They only changed by 2 feet, and I thought I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board. And then finally, part of the proposed amendment change is to this structure right here, which is the station house, and it's just simply, the station house was previously wood-sided, and what's being proposed now is stone facing on that structure. I just noted in my cover letter to this board that these changes do not, you know, present any substantive changes to the overall application, especially considering upset disturbance. Actually, along the train alignment, it's less disturbed with spanning, having that 175 foot, excuse me, 185 foot span for that Roman arch bridge, but I do note that there was just a minor change in disturbance, it's a quarter of an acre, and it's actually, the original application didn't have the septic plan detailed on it, so now, and actually, so there's the location of the absorption field, and we added additional brading just to, you know, just to try to keep it natural landscape rather than just doing the bare minimum that's required by the Dutch Standard of Health. So in summary, those are the changes that are being proposed and are requested of this board for amendment of the original site plan.
Jim?
I think you've answered, I had a couple of comments, but it seems like you kind of answered it overall, and that was just about total disturbance. I wasn't sure, based on my review, if it was changing. You said it's actually less disturbance overall now.
Actually, actually, there was less disturbance in the train alignment, but this area...
Okay, outside of this.
This area right here, just doing the septic system, it was an additional quarter of an acre. We're still under the threshold for SWIP, and it actually, so still a residential property, disturbance is greater than an acre, but less than five acres, so it's just an erosion instead of an actual amount, so there's, there's no change to the documents and practice included.
In the tunnel, it's the same, we're talking about additional disturbance there.
No.
Same, same, you're getting the same thing.
It's in the same book.
Yeah, I mean, another comment I had, I guess, slipped into the planning board members, I was trying to flip between the two plans, the old one and the new one, just to see where the new buildings, it moved. You said they only moved a couple of feet, so I guess that kind of answers the question. I couldn't totally place how much they moved, I guess because it was so minimal, so I said maybe swap one plan that shows the old, you know, overlay to the new so we can see the difference. I don't know if that's necessary, I said maybe that's...
Maybe just an inset, or pull that out as part of the plan, show the difference relative to a new set.
You know, I'm not sure, I was just saying like overlay it on this something or something like that.
I could do an inset here, so, okay.
Otherwise, I don't think there would be any other comments, questions being about this kind of disturbance and, yeah.
I would open it up to the planning board, if there's questions, comments.
The plan that I saw before, and I think in talking to you in the field, in talking to Seth, I was under the impression that a lot of the trestles were going to be supported by grade beams and screw piles and that sort of thing, which are really kind of low impact. That differs quite a bit if you're putting in a stone arch bridge.
It's okay.
So maybe not that much more excavation, but you're talking about large slabs or, I mean, what's going to support these arches?
So it's, so it's, once again, it's a, just a concrete, once again, it's a pretty small footprint, and so it would be concrete foundations that would be supported, and so it would no longer be helical piles that are being used, it would be, it would be concrete foundation that would be supporting that bridge. And so I, you know, me, once again, I think the overall disturbance in that area is still less.
Yeah, but the amount of volume that you're bringing in in terms of the stone and the concrete, is this going to be a structural stone arch bridge or is it...
It's a facade.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's a, actually, if you could go to sheet two of that, Jim? That's, that's a, you know, that's a typical, that's a typical section.
Okay, so it's a stone veneer on it, all right.
Yes.
Which you, to support that, it's really the substructure that's supporting the facade as opposed to the stone mass that's supporting itself to ground.
That's correct.
Is there still trestle work in there to support the track?
In this?
Yes.
Yes, it is, it's still, it's all integrated within that stone bridge, it's all...
It'll all be given by the system.
Yes, it will. And I also note, and it's, those plans are included, there was a change in structural engineers along the way, but it's the spirit of the trestles happening, it's just, you know, and I will note that the actual foundation for those trestles differs a little bit in that, the structural engineer and the geotech discussed that they felt that the helical piles, it actually creates some more disturbance, and so now it's just, it's a small excavation with a precast foundation, it's precast that will go down for setting the portions of the trestle on that.
Okay, and also the buildings are no longer going to have wood side, I mean, as Big Bad both can tell you, there's a significant difference going from building of sticks to building of stones when it comes to huffing and puffing. Is that also a stone veneer or is that a...
It is a stone veneer, and it's only on, it's only on the train station, only on the station house, that's it. The other structures still remain wood, wood siding.
Is that just an aesthetic choice, Mark?
It is, it's purely aesthetic.
Also, did we ever have Charles Brown weigh in on this overall site plan?
Yes, he did.
It was an extensive report that was prepared for, it was a part of the master plan that included this property along with the other properties adjacent to it.
Anyone else?
I thought, I wrote down the same thing about having an overlay map, I just think it'd be really helpful to just see the new additions in red, just to see the comparison, or however you want to do it.
Written this, just for the buildings?
Yeah, I mean, any of the changes, I just think it's really helpful to just see it in one spot.
There's a lot of squiggles on that now.
There's a lot of squiggles. It's just like what was there before, exactly when we, you know, versus...
Just to show the changes, Mark, if you can highlight them in some way.
Sure.
Just in the colors.
Well, it's, I've worked really hard to try to, I understand it's a busy day, but I've worked really hard to try to, you know, convey the message, and I may have to do another plan, just to, I don't think that I can do it, just what we do on here, that would show, oh, once again, we kept to the original alignment, the alignment.
All the tracks, everything's the same there.
Tracks.
It's just these dark spaces and the movement, the septic and the movement of the building.
That's it.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's helpful. Just remind me how long the tunnel is.
So, yeah, there, um, so, seven, 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 two, seven, two, seven, I think it's seven feet, eight feet long.
But what's the internal height of it?
Um, it's elevation, 65 minutes. That's, that's elevation, so...
Seven feet, seven tenths, something?
Top side of 39, starts at 30, but...
It's, there's 125, 135, 10 feet. That includes, so then you subtract the balance from it, it's about eight feet.
And is there any lighting through the middle of the tunnel?
No, there isn't.
So it's just a dark tunnel?
It's just a dark tunnel.
So conceptually, you're driving a tunnel, and there's like an animal in there, like what, how does this, how does that work?
This steam train has end light.
So the train is lit, but actually, when you go through this tunnel, you're looking right at Astrocoats. That was always the view, that was always the view, whether it was in a tunnel or whether it was graded.
The building on a stone facade, it uses stone all the way around the building.
Yes, it is.
The bridge and the stone facade, I think are the only instances I can think of where something is being done to make it look like something it's not in the entire property, right?
Point, yeah. I think the visual impact of the stone arch is very different from the lightweight trestle that's very utilitarian in nature.
Well, the only thing I would add is I do agree that I don't find the change to stone to be an improvement. I mean, that's why I'm asking, I thought that the wood facade settled more naturally into the landscape. There are obviously instances of stone arch bridges in Ryndette that do represent that type of construction, certainly not to the scale or that we see here, but...
There's actually two unproven stone arch bridges on the property.
So that has some relative, some relativity to what's on the property. The stone facade of the buildings doesn't, doesn't work for me, but I, it's not something I would put and draw on my sword for that.
But I'm with you on that, they never look, they may never look like they're authentic, authentic with stone.
No.
And why?
Any, any thought about what, stone material, it could be blue, could be made of bluestone or...
It's made of bluestone, it's on the rest of the properties, it's similarly similar to the rest of the properties, but this property is from the properties.
Well, that might be something you want to share with the applicant, because some, you know, some thought that the switch on the buildings themselves is maybe not the best suggestion.
I would just add to that, because my initial thought when I saw the stone was that I thought, if you're going to have a bridge and all of these things added, that tying it into the beautiful bridges that existed, if it actually could look authentic, is not a negative to me. I feel like that's an improvement that creates cohesion of the property, and the same I would feel about the stone building, because the stone barns on Annie Leibowitz property were once part of Astor's... on any Leibowitz property were once part of Astro Courts, if it actually mimic the stonework and the authentic materials of it, it's very indicative of the property, but if it doesn't, it's a mismatch. So, it has to be really on.
That's the intent, that is the intent.
Well, it might be helpful, um, to add some images of those stone arch bridges that are on the property, and the barns on any Leibowitzes has a reference point, as we're reviewing this.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, Jim, I believe we have a procedural resolution.
I do. For the board's consideration tonight, uh, procedural resolution accepting the application supporting documents is adequate for review by the board, advisors, public, classifying the action is type two under secret, which coordinate environmental quality reviews concluded, uh, scheduling the, uh, public hearing on the application for. We will be sending this to the C A B, the W A C, and H A P A C for review, as well as county planning, because it is a site plan, and, um, I mean, the W two planning board members per se. I would like to go, but I'm not going to be here on the fifth of July, so.
You could go.
Share my notes, or maybe if, if three of us could go, I don't know if that's.
All right, so, who, who might you vote? I can, Sean, if anyone else. I think you can deputize Sean to report.
But I do, I'll read it. Stand there.
All right, uh, all right. So, uh, we have a draft procedural resolution, and I have a motion to accept the.
So, welcome.
Uh, thank you, Jeremy, second please.
Second, Sean.
Thank Sean, all those in favor, opposed, sent to motion, prayers, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Uh, the second new application this morning is Jeremy Kaplan, three thirty-five Salisbury Turnpike, site plan and special permit.
Okay, hello, everybody, good, uh, evening, my name is Andrew Blassay, and with the offer of the National Call of Duty here in the village of Rhinebeck, company by Tyler Tyler.
Tyler, of course, this is Wagner Hodgson, sorry about the mask, um, if you need to speak up, just tell me.
Of course, I'm handling the inside, handling some of the, uh, actual, uh, disallowing concepts here, but, uh, we're, we're here in front of you, uh, essentially for a site plan and special permit, uh, application here tonight, as well as, I think, there on the agenda, there's a discussion of a, uh, referral from the zoning board, um, what's been, uh, proposed here is, uh, basically a change to a site plan that's already approved, um, the house, as noted on the, uh, thank you so much, uh, as noted on the, uh, the plans we have put up on the screen here, is already under construction, the pool is already under construction, um, basically, the change to the site plan, the thing being referred by the, the zoning board, is the sports court, it's right there on the left, it is going to be, uh, four, oh, yeah, of course, the laser corner, right, yeah, um, the, it is going to be a, uh, unlit, uh, asphalt, uh, surface essentially, with, uh, some fencing around it for, uh, obviously, the residents to use for basketball, volleyball, tennis, badminton, essentially any of those sorts of sports that need a nice big rectangle to play on, um, it's going to be screened from Salisbury Turnpike by two existing lines of trees, the one closest to Salisbury Turnpike, um, right now, we're proposing to add evergreen trees, because right now it's just deciduous trees, so it'll be year-round screening, and, uh, of course, the one thing being referred to you all from the Z B A, what Tyler and I had the opportunity to present to the Z B A a few weeks ago, is of course, technically, uh, the sports court, which is the big change here to the site plan, is being proposed to be built in the front yard, um, after all, uh, you know, the, the, the variance we're seeking, of course, is to be allowed to do that, this is a seventy, I think, seven acre piece of property, so.
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three, thank you, seven acre piece of property, so of course, um, even though it's technically in the front yard, it's to set back about seven hundred and fifty feet from the road, and it'll be very little screening, uh, we've provided some renderings of, uh, the view from Salisbury Turnpike as it looks now, as it'll look, um, as built without those extra evergreen trees, and then as built with the evergreen trees, and, you know, if you look very closely, you can see a little bit of it, but of course, it's going to be on it, you're really going to have to know what you're looking for, so, um, if there are any questions, of course, Tyler and I will try to answer as much as possible, but, uh, we're hoping this can, uh, be centered on here tonight, and, uh, if there's any amendments that, uh, you all want to see there, of course, we can, uh, assess that.
Chair.
Um, so we had, um, I think, a pretty extensive conversation at the preconference meeting with the applicant, and, uh, based on what I've looked at here, I think you guys have addressed, uh, pretty much everything from the preconference meeting, so I don't have a whole lot of comments on this, uh, you have applied in the Z B A for the fence height, so that's underway, and, um, the only comment or question that I did have was, um, I think before we talk about the fact that the, um, the woods are in, what was it, uh, forestry management program, and you are proposing a slight change to your tree lines, I just wanted to ask if that has any implication on the forestry management program, if you're moving trees or not, I didn't know the answer to this one.
So, you want to go ahead? So, there, there will be some trees, I mean, this is basically grading, that will cover the base of some trees.
That's right.
Um, yeah, it's really fairly minimal on the whole site, about eight percent of the site is wooded, um, so, yeah, we would do an amendment, of course, we have.
But that's not an issue?
Yeah.
Of course.
Yeah, and, uh, I, I had a review piece once a few, uh, weeks ago, a reoperation for the Z B A, but, um, the, the current documents require about forty-five or so acres to be maintained of the property, and of course, it's over seventy-three acres. There are some clearings that already exist on the property, but, part, part of the reason we're here with the referral for the Z B A tonight too, is, uh, the, the sports court, they're trying to put it in a place that'll have the least impact behind pre-existing tree lines, in a pre-existing clearing area, so you can see, of course, the difference between the existing, those tree line are small, and then, of course, in a place that'll have the, the least ecological impact, as it is, the house, um, is being built, so outside of that land boundary, it's well set back still from all of the property was, it's really the slot that makes the most sense, quite frankly, you just can't get around that little sliver of, of clearing there, because there's going to have to be some, uh, some cut and fill, just to, obviously, you don't want a lopsided tennis court.
What has to happen to change your forest management?
Uh, I think we should need to file amendment, I don't know exactly details, I know that we're within the criteria where we were afforded a little bit more of that.
But that, but you would assume you would be receiving something in writing to confirm your request?
Yes.
So, we should have that for the board.
Do you want, do you want to make a condition improvement, maybe, that, I don't know?
Well, maybe it is, if they're making that, if not, we could consider a condition of improvement.
I just want to make sure we're not, we're not, we're not putting this into the mechanical issue, I, I assume, say, it's not a judicial issue, but, this, if, uh, if the board happy, we can search, we'll get something to write, if I probably do it, I'll, I'll recheck the, the D M C.
Any questions from the planning board members?
Um, could you go back through the photographs, and you can tell us what the perspective is of the pattern?
So, this, this plan was requested by Jeremy, for this rendering, and this is the tennis court itself, and they were interested in the color of the tennis court, the, the frame of the fence is cedar, and it's stained, it's like, a photo called Dragon Brown, which is like a dark, uh, you know, basically, it's sort of blends into the environment as much as possible, it's like a dark grayish, brownish black. The mesh infill is not chain length, it's a well-defined mesh, it's black, so that's as clear as, as clear as possible the, the tennis court, and the courts itself is dark green, late old dark green, it's like a, you know, standard tennis court manufacturing material. The lines are white, the pickleball lines are yellow, so, and this is a view sort of taken a little bit above, and that there is the basketball, it's, it's a garden.
The reference to basketball, because on the post side of the court?
Yes. And then, so this group of photos, so this one is, so this photo was in the winter in Salisbury Turnpike, the house is under construction, so this is the line of, of kind of scrubby trees along the road, this is the line of scrubby trees just between the road and the sports court, that's the house under construction. If you go to the next slide, you can barely make out the sports court, but right, you know, that's the, the fence that we're talking about. So, this is without any additional screening at all. And then we're proposing finding some white lines, and I spoke to the highway supervisor, and he said if they were, if they were set back thirty-five feet from Salisbury Turnpike, that would be, so we're going to.
And is there any screening close to the?
Uh, just the existing line of trees that is there, and then this line of trees, yes.
And then existing line of trees also, uh, it was a little bit of a natural bluff, there's an old stone wall in that area too, so there is a bit of a, a couple of them rise up, there are the old stone walls, and then there are the foot guys down, and the line of trees is a little bit, so, it, uh, it matches a sort of lines, uh, a bit of the sports court on the right, especially.
Um, and there's going to be no lighting?
No lighting.
Okay, is there any kind of, um, rainwater runoff control feature, or drainage?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, yeah, so essentially, what's happening is we're collecting the water from the court, and kind of touch train around the perimeter.
Okay.
And then we're collecting the water that comes down the hill in a swale, that sort of runs around the edges to two kind of riprock outfalls.
Okay.
And there's a detail, and a little ways, yeah, there's, outfalls, so, yeah, there's a bunch of details.
Those will be masked from the road by topography, you're not going to see it?
Yeah, probably not, okay.
Anything else? Do you want to mention?
No, uh, no light player, no evening players.
Uh, perhaps if the moon is very, very bright, and people's, uh, eyesight is very, very good, that'd be possible, but I don't think that's really, it's just a state of the hill.
Yeah.
Um, and it, this is going to be largely an, an infilled project, it's not where you're going to be relocating soil from one part of the property and using it for fills?
No, that's all grading important.
Or is it grading, um?
No, no, it's all, it's all on-site, and essentially, uh, yeah, essentially, what happens is, it's like a sort of, you know, there's cutback into this hill, and some hill in this direction, the level will.
So, you're pulling it from here, and you're moving it over there, it's going to be like.
It's pretty much like a consistent, like, four percent slope, and we're just kind of like.
You can see right over the tree line there, to the left of the sports court, that's basically representative of where it is now, um, some gentle downhill topography from the current, you know, driveway that gives access there to, um, east.
Yeah, we set the height of the sports court at almost exactly the, the corner that runs right through the middle of it.
Okay.
Um, so, I just wanted to make a comment for the planning board, um, in regards to, actually, we just heard about it, there are some old historic stone malls, I guess, on the property, and some old paths, um, usually, we will refer this to H A P A C, I don't know, we're necessarily going to get a referral at the moment, just given the way things are. I anticipate they would have asked for phase one A and one B, um, I don't, I think we guys submitted that, um, so I don't know if the planning board would like to request that, based on what you've heard, because I don't know what their impact on that, um, so I'm just kind of throwing it out there, kind of a funny idea.
Well, it's consistently felt, we may require another applications, so, I think we should ask for that.
Is that about part of the?
I'm not sure what this is.
I don't recall, I mean, I, I don't recall whether it was in the question, the application for the house, or not.
I think it's on this.
We would have seen the house, because it was, I mean, we would have seen the house, so, um, yeah, I would request phase one A and.
You know what this is?
Yeah.
Anything else? Uh, Jim, procedural resolution, please.
For the board's consideration tonight, procedural resolution for Jeremy Kaplan for installation of the sports court at three thirty-five Salisbury Turnpike, accepting the application supporting documents is adequate for review by the planning board, classifying the action, um, is unlisted under secret, which coordinate environmental quality reviews concluded, scheduling the public hearing for July morning. Uh, we'll send this to the C A B for review, we were for H A P A C, and send it to the, uh, county, this is the site plan, and we delegate to planning board members to conduct the statements.
Would like to conduct the site visit. Oh, go ahead, then.
It is state in the field right now, Stella.
Uh-huh. Would like to go then, yes. I think so, thank you, Delise. All right, may I have a motion to accept the draft procedural resolution?
Certainly.
Thank you, Sean, second please. Second, Delise, all those in favor?
Aye.
On that, extensions, uh, either Ed or Jevon will be in touch and we just schedule an appropriate time for the site visit.
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll get this stuff together for the public hearing.
Um, Frank is, on the record, you know, that Craig is excusing himself, Frank, congratulations, I know you.
Thank you.
Because your son's getting in the works.
I have got something there, thank you.
Congratulations. Um, we will now open the public hearings, portion of the new meeting, first up is the application of Alex and Lloyd for the, uh, site plan review for the construction of single-family dwellings, artists, video. It's my understanding that we are still waiting information from the department of health, is that correct, Gretchen, any updates on that? No. And we have, uh, informed Mr. Lloyd, and he, uh, is fine with the continuation of the public hearing, but I will ask now, since it is a public hearing, if there is anyone present wishing to comment on the Lloyd application. If not, should I have a motion to continue the public hea- now, um, let's just talk a little bit about a dilemma, in that Gretchen has shared with me earlier, the potential lineup of public hearings for the next meeting, you might want to run down that, we might have a choice tonight to cross our fingers and hope that the department of health might respond within two weeks, and we could hijam some of what we've got coming up, or we can please play save, so Gretchen, do you want to just give us an overview?
Well, there's seven of them on, there will be, if we include the ones from tonight on July fifth, so that'd be seven or eight public hearings. Looking June twentieth, I completely agree with that one. So, potentially, it's Sullivan, Lloyd, Tottenham, Hattie, Honeybee, Kaplan, and Lloyd, as well as Rockland.
You like English.
So, June twentieth, we have the library, but it's a little lighter, not as much space, so that's where that's a concern, but we have Alderfield, Whitman Page, DeGeneres for public hearings that night, and then we are going to have to Boyd breaks, possibly to use this new application, because Boyd breaks are fairly easy, and they're just amendments. So, if you want to do the two weeks, the program on the twentieth?
We haven't heard any, and we might be suggesting the same thing with the department as well, um, but we have no indication from the health department how close or how far they are away.
With Lloyd, uh, Dave told me that they're waiting on comment back from them, from a major team letter.
From Lloyd.
From Lloyd.
So, laws on Lloyd's part.
As far as I know.
Okay.
And I did send that to them as well, so they know.
Well, there's nothing to lose by putting them on in two weeks, it takes no time, just continually, if we have to.
And it keeps it off of that other.
I, I think if we can, you know, it's an opportunity to maybe break. I, I think if we can, you know, it's an opportunity to maybe break it up a little bit since the next one is a little lighter and, and it would be on a, just, I mean, it would be on a different side. But if anyone objected to doing that, going out two weeks instead of one, um, and perhaps we could, uh, Gretchen, you might reach out to Dave on all of these and see if we can get an update on what he thinks his timeline might be. So then I would entertain a motion to continue this public hearing until the June twentieth meeting?
Yes.
May I have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post extension motion carries.
Okay, I, I will announce it once again for the record. I think Gretchen just said it, but reminder to everybody, the next meeting, because of early elections that take place here, this room will be occupied. Our meeting will take place at the lower level of the Star Library. So if you're, uh, attending that meeting or anyone watching on Zoom or Panda, um, that meeting will take place there in Park and coming from the lower level. Uh, the next application, uh, which was continued for this evening is the Village of Rhinebeck, two eighty-two Route three oh eight. I think most of you are, so I, because it was unnoticed, we are required to open the public hearing this evening, um, which I consider open now. However, since that time, we have received notification that the application was withdrawn, so that thereby removes it from our agenda and I'm presuming there's no one here to comment. So we just, I think we don't have to do it anymore since it was officially withdrawn.
Close the public hearing?
Yes, you can close the public hearing. I mean, actually, with the application being withdrawn, it doesn't really sustain at all.
Well, let's be safe and if someone.
So.
Thank you, Sean, all those.
Okay.
Oh, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next up, Honeybee Childcare, twenty-one Fern Cliff Drive, second and special use permit. Hello, Kathy, how are you?
Well, how are you? Kathy Evans.
I'm here.
Honeybee Childcare, um, to buy a special use permit to have a childcare program at the Fern Cliff Arch Care Nursing Home.
All right, I think we're familiar with this. And Jim, try to refresh our memory as to why this was being taken and that would be helpful.
Uh, this was, I think there were some questions about, um, the use going into an existing non-performing building and how this, um, use is permitted in Zone District Five in that. And, hold on one second.
Uh, the, uh, relationship that exists between, uh, the nursery program itself and the relationship with Fern Cliff itself.
So that it can be, uh, it can be in place there as a use accessory to the Fern Cliff, so.
Right, Kathy did send us, we didn't get a letter today explaining how, um, the program would be integrated into.
Do you want to summarize my thoughts for the record?
Absolutely, thank you.
One of the things I wanted to point out is we have a location, we have two, uh, other locations. One in Martin DePaul's and the other one is in Poughkeepsie, um, Boardman Road. So we have a relationship, uh, with the Landing and we've had a relationship with them, uh, since they've been open. So, uh, we're very familiar as far as, um, integrating into, um, assisted living or rehabilitation centers and how to integrate that with the children. Um, as I mentioned before, a lot of the children who go visit, they say, oh, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna visit the, um, grandmas and grandpas. So we host a lot of our events there, so just, um, I had sent the, the letter in, but just, uh, in the spring, we do planting with them. Uh, we actually do a lot of stinkalongs, um, during the holidays. Um, we actually have our pre-k graduation man. Uh, we include them in a lot of the, um, activities. Uh, we have pen pals, so the, the children are learning to, you know, write their names and they can't really respond that much, but they draw pictures and that kind of goes back and forth. We are very, um, into with the recreational director there, as we would be at Fern Cliff as well, um, setting up, um, activities where we can kind of pushing, um, to them as well. Um, one of the things I wanted to mention, you had said around about as far as like the employees that would be using or utilizing the program. And our license capacity is we're looking at like forty-four or less. So that's kind of like a roundabout number that I gave as far as what employees, um, would utilize. So at any given time, um, our capacity at any given day would not go over forty-five, or I mean, not forty-five, forty-four, forty-three, um, children in the program.
I'm trying to recall, you conducted a survey of your employees.
Uh, honeybee employees?
No. A sur, a survey, excuse me, of the Fern Cliff employees.
Yes, so there was, prior to us coming in, because Franklin reached out to us as a program, they did, um, conduct a, an employee survey, because they were having a hard time with, um, employment. And, um, what they came back to us was that ninety percent of employees that had children, right? For that age group, so that's not ninety percent of the overall employees at the location. It's just ninety percent of the employees that had, uh, young children would be, uh, most likely utilizing the program.
And do you know how many, uh, employees responded to that survey? It's ninety percent of what?
Of the, of the employees that had young children.
Yeah, how accurate is that number?
I'm not sure what's happening, no, no. They had just said ninety percent. That was a number we were given. It was a large enough number where they felt like they needed to have, um, this program in the facility. I also wanted to mention as well, that I think I mentioned in previous, um, visits that I've been here, is that, um, there is a two to three year waiting list, um, in this area for childcare.
And regarding the use, so you want to speak to that or John, do you want to get done with the research?
I can speak to that. So the, um, the property is located in the HP twenty zone, which is a residential zone. Um, you can't have two applicable uses in that zone, um, but, uh, because, you know, under the zoning law, but, um, this use would be allowed as if it was accessory to, um, the Fern Cliff, uh, facility. And, um, we took a look at the zoning law definitions of, um, alternate care facility, which the, the Fern Cliff facility meets that definition. And we also looked at the definition of accessory use. And, uh, we actually looked at some of the court cases on how accessory uses are defined, uh, in the court decisions. And we, in our opinion, uh, there's a, there's a substantial enough relationship between what's being proposed and, um, and the primary use, which is the Fern Cliff facility. Um, the accessory use has to be incidental and subordinate to the main use. Uh, we looked at, uh, because Fern Cliff's a non-conforming use, we wanted to make sure that it wouldn't be an illegal expansion of a non-conforming use, which it's not, because the applicants are going to be utilizing an existing space, uh, in the Fern Cliff, uh, building for this, um, facility. So, uh, in the narrative that, um, Kathy submitted, um, she detailed the number of, of programs that, uh, they'll be utilizing to create an interaction and integration with the existing, uh, Fern Cliff, uh, facility. And so those details are in the record. And there's also detail in the record about the fact that there'll be, uh, mutual benefit, um, because of the, the ability of the Honeybee, um, facility to provide childcare for the employees. So when we added everything up, uh, we thought that it did constitute, uh, an accessory use to the Fern Cliff facility. Um, we provided just a very short memo to, um, Melody and Jim for the record. If any of the planning board members want to copy that memo, I have other copies, uh, we need tonight.
Thank you, John, thank you for your hard work. Kathy, thank you for responding so quickly with a request for, um, the program ideas. Um, I think that resolves the questions that, um, were responsible for asking us to continue it. Is there anything else? Anyone, Jim, anything else from you or anyone else? Is there anyone here from the public wishing to speak to this application? If not, could I have a motion to close the public hearing? Uh, second please, second. All those in favor? I oppose extension motion carries. Jim, would you like to, um, welcome to the Google resolution?
Hey, Ambien, I'm going to add some amendments as we talk, so.
Okay.
So, for, for the board's consideration tonight, a draft approval resolution for Honeybee Childcare, uh, to open a childcare center at twenty-one Fern Cliff Drive within HP twenty zoning district, as you see it in the top paragraph, and we would like to add in their text that says as an accessory use to Arch Care. Um, we, uh, positively access type two hundred secret for according to our quality review is concluded. Based upon submitted information including reports that we have received, finds that the proposed work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of chapter one two five. With respect to special use permit, finding of the work independent use is consistent with the general standards for special use permits set forth in one two five. And then the second part of this, um, is a reference that I actually had, um, stating that we find the proposed daycare use in Fern Cliff, as noted by the applicant's planed app programming, that will be integrated into the existing programs in Fern Cliff, similar to how they already programs into their own location. And the most basic structure would be utilized by existing Fern Cliff. That is consistent with our determinations and approval made by the town of Rhinebeck Planning Board and zoning administrator determination letter dated July twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one, where it was determined that the nursery school will be integrated into, including intergenerational programs for the residents, as well as providing childcare services for the member and staff. I believe the nursery school can be included as accessory uses defined in article thirteen. And that the use occupies your tendency and, uh, looking on the same premises essentially means that it is an accessory use. That use was approved by the town of Rhinebeck Planning Board. I thought I'd put that in there as a reference. And I'd also like to add notes, um, referencing the grant lines memo that was submitted as a reference as well. Just kind of showing the history of why we are where we are. Um, with respect to the application for site plan approval, finding the proposed work intended use to be consistent with the town code, uh, and approving the application inclusive of the site plan by G P I dated March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, which authorized the planning board chair to stamp and sign the well-sighted application upon the satisfaction of the three items listed there. The only other thing I would want to do is just at the bottom of this, just put an attachment, um, you know, for the grant lines memo as well as the, uh, letter that Kathy sent us about the integration of the programs into this. It's all contained in the neutral, yes, John.
The only other thing, Jim, uh, that I would suggest adding is I think that the information that Kathy just provided about the fact that we is experienced in doing this at the other locations that they have, so that this not, would not be a novel, uh, would not be novel for them. I think that's a, uh, should be added to maybe three B.
I can do that. So if everyone's okay with making a couple edits and just confirming that with Melody when I finalize that for filing, which is as I suggested.
Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Michael, second.
Second.
I will call the board, please.
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Edmund?
Aye.
And I'll go back.
Thank you so much for all of your time and patience. I'm excited.
Thank you so much.
I'm sure the residents there are as well, so good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, uh, under the public hearings, Rachel DePape, one oh eight Salisbury Turnpike Site Plan and the Land Permit for working plans. Uh, as was true with Mr. Lloyd, this too is awaiting, uh, permission from the Department of Health. Uh, Rachel was notified, she is not here, there's no new information to add. I would ask if there's anyone here from the public, since this is a public hearing, wishing to comment? Uh, hearing none, that we have the same option here that we exercised with Mr. Lloyd, which is to continue it for two weeks, with fingers crossed. Um, if that's okay with all of you, may I have a motion to continue it?
I hope that we do that.
So, uh, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose extension. Uh, next up, Benjamin Abrams, Top Notch, uh, one oh four Russell Avenue.
Good evening.
Good evening. Ernie Martin, representing Top Notch Property Management LLC. Also with me is Benjamin Abraham, who is a member of that LLC. Uh, the, the application for you is located on one oh four Russell, Russell Road. And includes fifteen acres that will be subdivided into two parcels. Um, lot one, which includes existing house. It's not, no. So lot one right here, which, which includes the existing house, would be a seven acre parcel. Division line will be here and the remainder is a nine acre parcel. Since that, we're here, we have, uh, added contours through the site. Uh, we put a scale bar on the map. Uh, we did show the area of the proposed septic system as well. And we also showed the proposed driveway. And, uh, for those members that were at the site meeting, uh, one of the questions that, uh, that, uh, those members asked is the location of this driveway. Now, my first plan, I actually had the driveway over here. Uh, if you recall, it was an area in here where I think one time, many years ago, someone tried to maybe build some access there, but it was for whatever reason, I don't know. Uh, however, the grade change from here to the road was more substantial. So I moved the driveway from here over to here. Uh, there's practically no grade change here. And over in this direction, there were some large old trees that had we put the driveway here, we might have maybe lost one of those trees. Uh, I did meet with the highway superintendent, uh, to indicate this location and, uh, he was in agreement with it. I believe in the filing, we had a letter from Mr. Wyon saying he was in agreement with that. And at such time as the applicant would, uh, whoever builds on this property, they would have to apply for, for, uh, driveway. In addition, since the last meeting, um, the owner has hired a archaeologist to, who are phase one and phase one B, phase one A and a one D. Uh, I spoke to him, uh, at the end of last week. Uh, he's done his historical research of this area. I believe a shovel test is going to take place this week. Also, last week, I met with the Health Department to do, uh, test holes for the septic system right here. Um, soils, uh, in my belief are conducive to support a self-service sewage holder system. Uh, in one of the holes, we did encounter some rock down about four, four and a half feet. So the final design would be a, uh, fill system, but it's, that's not unusual. That's all I had to, uh, add at this time.
Okay, Jim, any comments?
The only, the only comment I have at the moment is just that we had asked for the one A, one B, which is underway. I'm going to have, but it needs to be worked on, otherwise I'm standing on my shoes.
Uh, I know, right, the site visit, who went?
I think Fred.
Okay, are you going to report?
I think I have my lights out, but that's, that was for the moment. Um, the site itself, I'll, I'll just do that. The site itself, uh, the thing that I was really struck by, there were a number of magnificent old trees on this site. This goes out as a, and a long, big time. Uh, it's just, it's an extraordinary, beautiful piece of property. And we, uh, spent a long time actually going over it, looking through it. Uh, the site in the house makes good sense with the planning to do it. There was a bit of a natural opening there already. I think we made it very clear that we were very concerned that these trees be preserved, that, you know, we preserve them, there's going to be a tree survey done to identify them. And that what we always do do is we put in a building envelope, shows where the disturbance would be for the house, for the driver, except for anything like that. So I think that that's important to note, just because, uh, just trees are really quite outstanding. Um, I don't think we saw any problems with the planning to do it. I know that we discussed the driveway. And we had some concern about when the spot being opposite an existing driveway, we wanted to avoid that, which I see, see Chris had done that on this, on this plan. Greg and I both thought with the planning to do it, we're planning to do it, makes good sense. Uh, the only thing I saw that was very disappointing is it does, the bittersweet is becoming kind of Rhinebeck's, uh, default ground cover. I, I've never seen sort of bittersweet, you might be right. But, um, it's a, it's a nice piece of property, I think they, I think they thought this through there.
And to your point regarding trees, uh, I think in some past time here, I think this area. And to your point regarding trees, I think in some past time here, I think this area that the publics are in access, it was obviously cut out, very obvious. But then as you went through this area right up to where the house is, this area was, it was brushed there, but it's no major trees. So I think I feel very comfortable that where the house is, together with the septic system, as far as any big trees, would be no disturbance at all.
That's, that's.
There will be some small brush trees of.
Yeah, but the big ones will.
They will remain.
They really are significant trees. I was very impressed to still see them in the property.
Questions or comments from planning board members? A neighbor had mentioned the Indian bat. I was going to ask, is the neighbor who sent in a letter commenting on this application here? No. Gretchen, could either you or Jim summarize that for the record? Is Edna's point now that the major area of concern was habitat? Is that correct?
Right, yeah. Well, it was any potential destruction of trees and then the fact that there are lots of bats that she always sees walking nests. That property.
Gretchen, we saw the trees that would potentially be roosting places, we know about, shank out, do things like that. I didn't notice any of those imposed areas for her herself. I mean, certainly in the larger construction, I know too much of those things about itself. I'm not entirely sure what the specific of the concern is. And the property, they may, these are the bats are roosting, maybe further into the property and not as far as the construction or development or the property.
But even if they were, my understanding is the contractors have to work within certain windows when they can take trees down.
That's correct.
So. Because of the.
I think Ariya addressed that there was a presence of Indian bat, which are most probably suggested to count. But there is a window, I think it's where you cannot take down trees. I think it's April 1 to April 1, something like that. So if there was any clearing that would be needed for this house, even though it's, it's minor brush of trees, it probably would have to be done outside that window.
What's in?
Can, can we be sure that that will be the location of any future hopes and any future driveway?
We do tend to put a developing envelope, a building envelope on these supports of town and the subdivisions where these things can go. And then if they have to change, maybe let's say they had a whole bunch of rock in front of the septic system, maybe on a five foot fill section, they would come back to the planning board to discuss the necessity to move it. As well as any further trees that would have to come down and anything like that, such things have to be moved.
We can, we can add a building envelope, sure.
Okay.
And I think we can put a, I'm sure we can put a note on there about the endangerment species.
I was going to say it might be, it might be helpful to either responding in writing and adding it to the file or put a note on there just so that we can demonstrate that you heard the neighbor was concerned and responded.
So we have to participate in ourself, yes.
Yeah. Did you, do you have a, do you have a report?
Yes. Other than what's been mentioned, the CAD and the WRC have no issues with the request.
Anyone else? Anyone here on the pice of the general or the, I guess it was a lady, the one from there, but anyone else here? So, we need a motion to continue the public hearing. What the heck, I mean.
To what?
Well, that's what we're asking. Do you have any sense of when you'll have to report that from your archaeologists?
I would think, I would think within the next week or two max, say two weeks.
When is your next meeting?
Two, two, two weeks.
Two weeks.
Why don't, with your, with your indulgence, I think we will continue this on the path we're on and continue this to the second meeting, to the first July, do you like that?
July 5. July 5.
Could I have a motion to continue the public hearing until July?
So moved.
Second please, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction. Thank you. Thank you for all your information. Yes, please, John.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Next up is the application of Laura Sullivan, 127 Caltop Road, Site Plan Review for the Construction of the Full House. At the request of Catherine Ackert, who is the applicant's representative, we will also be continuing this public hearing. Is there anyone here from the public wishing to comment on the Sullivan application? Well, the next decision is to win. Are we continuing that?
Oh, they just dropped it. On the next, yeah.
Okay.
Because there's still a way to come out.
Okay, so we, then we have a motion to continue the public hearing until the July 5.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction. Thank you. And the last public hearing of this evening is the Rockledge Application 492 Ackert Brook Road, Site Plan Approval Special Use Permit, Wetland Permit for condo rooms. Unrefused. Thank you, Edna.
Good evening. Mark Remitz came here representing Rockledge. And just to provide an update to this board. So, response to comments from the town engineer had been made by this office on both April 13th and May 22nd. And in speaking with the town engineer today, the town engineer hasn't gone through all the materials that have been submitted. Certainly up to the board, but it's, I can go through all materials that have been submitted. It's quite a bit. I know town engineer had a forty or fifty comments on their original review. They have all been responded to in full detail. Drawings have been amended and detailed reports have been prepared for response to the town engineer. In addition to other consultants that have, that are obtained and working on the project for water supply and wastewater collection and disposal. That is being done by WSP3D Design Engineers for the project. And they have prepared documents in our communication with both Dutch County Health Department, New York State Health Department, and New York State DTC to move along that certain aspect of the project. Just, I mean, I looked at this board. I can go through materials that I have submitted and provide a summary if that board so wishes.
I assume your responses were submitted to the planning board and circulated to the planning board and also made available to the public. Is that correct, Gretchen?
Anything will go on there. Now that's been announced.
So you're saying that after this evening, the file will be updated on the website to include all of Mark's responses to this?
Everything that I have will go on there.
So there's, you know, like for example, on the April 13th submission, there are actually, you know, 21 items that were submitted. And May 22th submission mainly includes stormwater pollution convention plan for the project. That's, you know, that was, you know, based on what CPL line for materials, that's over a thousand pages worth of material for the stormwater pollution convention plan. So that's, that's basically the, May 27th, that's two weeks ago, that material was provided in response to CPL. I'll just, we go, you know, the plant set, overall, the plant set has, in spirit, has not changed. There's been some, you know, grading modifications and realignment of some of the facilities on there in order to respond to CPL's engineering comments and to meet current codes and standards for separation businesses. So all, all those drawings have been detailed submitted to this board. One of the things that was outstanding was a wetland delineation plan for the New York State DTC that's submitted. Engineer's report for water supply, water supply and treatment system. Engineer's report for sanitary sewer system, wastewater treatment plant. Then there was a flow confirmation letter that was approved by the Dutch County Department of Health. In addition, the Dutch County Waste Water Authority memorandum of understanding is there. Provided, town engineer has some comments with regard to lighting on the project. So a detailed lighting plan has been prepared and submitted that shows dark sky, dark compliance. There was, yeah, there was some information with regard to traffic impact analysis, multiple traffic impact analysis has been done for this. I should say updated. There was initial traffic study that updated, so that most recent information is there. Sign off by the highway superintendent with regard to access, using the current main access for that property as an emergency access. Access further to the north is now the main entrance. Also, a letter from the fire department, Hillside Fire, it's in Hillside Fire District, we have a sunflower from Hillside. Landscaping information with regard to landscaping around the proposed condominium units and also, you know, associated with the stormwater work that's being done. Architectural plans, floor plans for the condominium units. Also architectural plans for the carriage house, you know, the carriage house, gatehouse, main residence and the barn that were also submitted. And then just line by line response to the town engineer for various comments. So all that information is now available to, to anybody.
Did Christian give you any indication of how long it will take to wrap up his review?
He did not. Oh gosh, you know, hopefully, I know that it's taken a while and I've been so patient through this project. I do feel we have a complete response, so I'm hopeful that we can, you know, be back next month at this time. You know, looking forward to a response from CPL. If there's any items to address, we'll certainly do a review.
Christian?
I don't have any, I'm looking through the plans. I don't think much has changed from a planning perspective. I think we're kind of in the engineering side of things. It's why CPL is doing their review. We can talk about process and procedure if you want to get, it's been a little while in terms of how we see this going after my discussions with John Lyons, in terms of how we kind of run through the next steps.
I'd like to refresh our memory on that.
So this is, this is based on my discussion with John. If everyone remembers, the applicant still has an application before the ZBA to essentially transfer units from one building to the other, and that's a fair statement. So in talking with him, what we came up with is that all materials need to be submitted to the planning board for review, acknowledging the applicant to be final from their perspective. We will get the engineering consultant review on these final materials. And then once they've been signed off on by CPL, we believe there is a stage where the planning board, ZBA, can begin consideration of approval or denial of the requested applications as follows. The planning board will continue to undertake the secret review process, discuss and complete part two and part three forms. That will be a lengthy discussion. Remember, we'll be done with the grass here. This will be another long secret discussion. It's not just for the board. So plan a lot of discussion on that one. If no significant environmental issues are identified by the board, the board will be asked to pass a secret approval resolution or determination of no significance, a negative declaration or condition negative declaration. If there are significant issues identified, positive declarations found, then the secret review process would have to continue by requiring a draft DIS until any such issues have been satisfactorily addressed. This step is required based on, again, what John has said to me. In order for the ZBA to be able to undertake their review processes, they defer the secret review to the planning board. They have to have a secret determination or approval from the planning board before the ZBA can proceed with the variance application review. Once the seeker is done here at the planning board, the ZBA will then undertake their review for consideration of the variance application. They have accepted the application as complete and initiated the public hearing. It has been kept open until the seeker is complete. They will end up continuing their public hearing on the application. Then they will have to close their public hearing upon receiving any comments and issue a decision within 62 days of the closing their public hearing. Once the variance application process is complete, the planning board, applicant will know whether the project in before is proposed with the variants that have been, variances that have been requested or whether something will need to be revised if the variances are denied or partially approved or some other conditions made. With the ZBA step done, then the planning board will come back to the planning board for consideration of the final approval.
So I would say for the benefit of the public or any rooms here, once we receive Jim's meeting notes this morning, these are documents that are available and the outline that Jim has gone through, just now telling what the next steps is available in that document.
And it was in previous.
Yeah, it's been, it's not new, but I needed my memory refreshed.
Absolutely.
And so the public may as well, and it is available in a very clear and concise form. Anything else?
So just one question, I guess maybe to check whether, you know, it's, obviously it's been a while since the ZBA has, has looked at this. So they are not, although in spirit, like the documents that I've prepared for review by the planning board don't really affect the decision. I don't know if they affect the decision in the ZBA or not at all, engineering detail, but we're just looking to move, you know, number, you know, change the number of units for structure. But I think just to be on the safe side, and I, I'll just check with the ZBA whether to provide also to them an update of all materials that, you know, not necessarily all the, you know, water and sewer, but maybe the site plans and just have a discussion with the ZBA to see whether or not to, you know, provide them updated materials. Any thoughts on that?
I think Gretchen can.
I'll talk to Scott. See if he just wants to even put it on the agenda as a discussion one night.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I mean, she can ask Scott if they're at a point where they would like an update as well, you know, maybe a brief update on what their upcoming move is. Wouldn't do any harm. At least make them aware of where they are in the process. It is the seeker approval that is causing the way it's going, but I don't think it could hurt to update them. So they may have some time on an upcoming agenda that they would accommodate.
Okay, thank you.
Planning board members. Members of the public. All right. If there are none, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing until July 5th.
So moved.
And second, opposed in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extension, the motion carries. To everyone.
Thank you.
We are now, we have two referrals to attend to regarding the meeting. One is Edna, Edna has rejoined us. It is the town referral from the town board on the managed subdivision. You remember, we spoke about an ODA at the last meeting. And then the second one we'll take up is the ZBA referral that was referred to earlier by the applicant. So managed subdivision.
Yeah, so we've provided, you know, page of comments on this. We must be look back to the memo that John, the grant lines provided on May 7th. Essentially kind of outlining what the ODA is and what the elements and issues are here. John had mentioned he's looking to extend that lane to all of the lots so that he can satisfy their requirement of public access to a public street. And John did note that an ODA, in his legal thinking, is a preferred vehicle overseeing potentially area variance, which could be the other way to go. Frontage, John noted, is in the memo, would be resolved by the resolution of the issue of access. Access can be provided by getting some ODA to kind of tie together those two issues. Just trying to kind of summarize my thoughts and notes here. The ODA alternative is provided to remove the frontage requirements in the town law because it assures proper access and safety has been achieved in other way. That is how the ODA removes the frontage requirements of subdivision regulations and therefore there would be no, no need, no point in requiring. And therefore, there would be no, no need, no point in requiring those frontage requirements of ultimate steps have been taken to ensure safe access. So based on his memo and my understanding of O D As, which is relatively new to me, we believe the referral back to the town board should involve, if it's going to involve any discussion, discussion in consideration of whether or not the board believes that the proposed access alternative is acceptable versus requiring access for all lots. It is acceptable recommendation for the town board to consider the O D A could be forwarded. If it's determined that the access alternative in your opinion is not acceptable, then maybe it's recommendation to deny it or request a different consideration of what should be done there. Based on the application, the material is provided, summary by Grant Lyons, the O D A is their preferred method moving forward. My recommendation was the planning board, upon a referral by the town board, find the requested O D A, utilizing the layout detailed in their plan sheet, raises no significant planning or environmental concerns, and is an acceptable and reasonable method to provide access to the existing lots. And then essentially recommend the town board or Lyons own study of facts and determining how they want to proceed with the O D A. I do believe this will come back as a subdivision referral in the future, but at that point, the access issue will then resolve and it'll just be a lot less effective. Any questions?
You asked, you told me what an O D A is.
It's an open development area. It's something that is needed to provide access to a lot that does not have frontage on the street. Essentially, we have a landlocked lot. In order for him to get access to it, he would either need a requested variance or get this open development area, which is a legal, it's a legal permit that can only thrive by the town board.
And it doesn't really change anything on the earth? It is just a doctor?
It's, yeah, it's, it's, the town board is going to allow him to go through. He is proposing to change the layout of the lots, but it won't change the number of the lots. So it's still this block of lots, and then I think it's three lots back there now. He's going to change a little bit of the configuration based on what was submitted, but it won't change the number. But the O D A itself is just a legal document the town board can only do to provide that access because they don't have any.
They don't have any.
Not for the, not for this one particular lot.
Jim, forgive me, I feel like you said this, it didn't quite click all the way. It has to be a public road, right, to get to, because then that creates the road frontage of the public road. Now it's public road, but if it's a shared driveway, that's why we're here. Because then you don't have public road access, even if the driveway is wide enough, right? And that's the problem.
He has a landlocked lot, right, so he needs, he needs to be able to utilize the right of way in this open development area to get that landlocked lot access to a public road.
Right, so a private road doesn't satisfy, I see.
Anyone else? Any thoughts on the recommendation that Jim has written into his notes? Which is, I think.
This is the plan up on the screen. Essentially, there are three lots back, back in here. And they all come out of here, so maybe this provides the access to the lots in back there.
The lot that's all the way in the back from now, is that just because this happened a long time ago?
Yes. If you're here, here's before they changed the hotline locations, but not the number of lots. So yes, it was subdivided at some point in the past.
We all had a chance to look at Jim's recommendation here. Hopefully, he finds that the requested O D A. There we go.
This is the one, you just answered, right?
Yeah.
That's like the hospital.
If everyone's in favor, I could entertain a motion to accept that.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Opposed in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. And the last thing this evening is the zoning board's appeals referral to us from, yeah, from their review of the application of Jeremy Kaplan, we spoke of earlier.
Correct, so this is the application to the sports court that we reviewed earlier tonight, which is actually on the same date. The applicant is before the Z B A, represents the peer, for variance to place the sports court with no lighting in front of the house, property front, sales, where it turned bike, which is not an identified scenic road. The court is proposed to be seven hundred and forty-five and a half feet from the property line, and it just saw that proposal, some screening, some location. There's the existing tree line, they're planting an I D nevergreen tree to help screen it further along the road. Our referral recommendation was for the Z B A that we can find any significant planning or environmental concerns due to the location of the court and the proposal as it stands. And certainly, if the board feels otherwise, we have the option for putting in there if you have any concerns.
Since we're just requesting side case one, should we, should we pump this? That aligns as we have more information on property?
That's a good question. And timeline wise, I want to do that.
Can you add something to your one and two? Which would?
Great, same. I think that's the only fact, that's the only fact that I think something.
They're only back on the 21st for a public hearing, so, yeah, so the resolution would be following the opinion.
A resolution of the zone.
The Z B A resolution. If they do.
So if they come back to us in July, then we can still have.
Any approval, assumption?
We could have our response then, or, I mean, they like, it's been thirty days, but essentially they will have the information, they'll have the information that we have.
I think we could add it to that as well.
The other option, the miller's saying is just to add in, you know, recommend that they rely on their own study of the facts as well as reviewing the phase one A and one B, should it identify a concern or issue, and they can take it up on themselves if there's something that comes in.
There's time for it now.
Yeah.
Unless you want to get.
All right, so with the understanding that we're adding to, to number, yeah, to number two, the information we just said on phase one A, I hope we do that. And for the second to the second, opposed in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you, everyone, and I adjourn everything, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, and a second I already got, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, thank you, everyone.